Why come everytime it's the community uh means the Israelites? Y'all leave us out of the community means. Why come everytime it's the community means, we ain't on the list? When we, when we out here every week, every other day picking the word of God out to our people, trying to wake our people up and get our people to repent. Why come we never on the list? Why nobody ain't trying to get us in there right now? So we can speak and bring the word out and bring the solution to our people? That's because it's a bunch of hypocrites down here. Give me Proverbs chapter 11 verse 9. All y'all care about is making a name for yourself. Up in the flat I tell you the truth. That's why they had these community means at the Civil Rights Museum. This place right here, this is a tourist spot. You're right here meaning at this spot so you can have more tourists come through, so downtown can make more money. But you always leaving the real community leaders out of the uh pitch. You leaving us out of the meat because y'all do not want to repent. Read this bruh.
The book of Proverbs chapter 11 verse 9. An hypocrite with his mouth.
You hear that what God called you? God called y'all hypocrites. God said a hypocrite with what?
A hypocrite with his mouth destroyeth his neighbor.
He said a hypocrite with his mouth destroying his neighbor. Y'all destroying our people. Why? Because you lie. You down here dealing falsely. Give me Leviticus chapter 19 verse 11. I'm gonna remove y'all today. I'm gonna touch on y'all. Y'all won't pass or somehow you want a solution. You don't want no solution. You don't want no solution. You don't wanna help black people in the community. Y'all ain't tired of the people killing each other. You making money off our people killing each other. It's called industrial prison complex. Let me repeat. It's called industrial prison complex. Y'all making money off killing. Y'all making money off our people killing each other. Read what you got.
Leviticus chapter 19 verse 11. Ye shall not steal, neither deal falsely, neither lie one to another.
God said y'all gotta stop dealing falsely with your people. Y'all ain't down here. You ain't down here for no community means. You ain't down here for black people. It's all for our people to wake up. We know y'all here. We know why you won't put us on the list. So we can get up in uh and teach our people. Give me Psalms 119 verse 9. Let me show you the solution right here. We already, we have been classified as a hate group. We ain't robbed nobody. We ain't killed nobody. We ain't murdered nobody. We ain't hung no crosses up in nobody yard. We ain't done none of that. But you classify us as a rape uh a hate group and you leave us out of every community means it is around here. We tired of it. Because we are the only true community leaders. Y'all, y'all ain't even in the community. You don't, you don't even live in the communities where they killing door. How you gonna speak on what's going on in the community? And you don't know what's going on in the community? And you don't live in it. But you leave us out of every mean. Read what you got.
Psalms 119 verse 9.
Cause y'all know when we gonna come, we gonna come with the solution. We gonna come with the solution to the problems that's going on in the community. Read.
Where with all shall a young man cleanse his ways?
God said, what with all shall a young man cleanse his ways? That's what y'all, that's what y'all asking. That's the question up in the community mean, right? The question is, how can we get these young black men to cleanse their ways? We got the answer right here. We got the answers right here. But everytime y'all have y'all community means, y'all constantly leave us out of the community means. Why? Because you full of hate. Why? Because you don't want our people to learn the truth. Why? Because you don't want our people. You making money off our people uh destruction. You making money off our people being incarcerated. Memphis was supposed to be the heart of the Bible Belt. This is the heart of the Bible Belt. It's more churches than anything up in Memphis. Churches is big business. You got church leaders up in there right now, but they will not teach our people to repent. And you got law statutes in command. Read that again bruh.
Psalms 119 verse 9. Where with all shall a young man cleanse his ways?
God said, what with all shall a young man cleanse his ways? I'm trying to see who gonna, I'm trying to see who gonna get the spirit on them to go and say, "Look, hey, put them brothers that's speaking out here, that's speaking out here uh on the loudspeaker uh on the list, so they can come in and we can hear what they gotta say." So help you come in and bring the solution to our people. Everytime the news down here, the news always censoring us out. Everytime, everytime we go somewhere and bring the solution to our people, we being censored out. Why? Because you don't want no solution. You don't want no solution and it's set up by design to keep our people down and destroyed. We called it the Civil Rights Museum. We going with Martin Luther King was out here doing. Martin Luther King was out here speaking on the streets. Martin Luther King was speaking on the streets. We out there with Martin Luther King doing. That's how I know y'all some hypocrites. That's why you, you, this uh, y'all mean here, that's what you have means here. Uh because it's a historic spot, so you can gather tourists, that's it. But you will not end up with no solution. Read it up. Read, read that again bruh from the top.
Psalms 119 verse 9. Where with all shall a young man cleanse his ways?
That's the question right here. That's what y'all asking in that community means. You wanna know, how can these young black, how can a young black youth cleanse their ways? How can the young black youth cleanse their ways? How can these young black men start killing each other? Why? How can these young men, how can these young black men start selling drugs in their community? Read.
By taking heed.
By what?
By taking heed there unto according to thy word.
By taking heed according to thy word. That's how the young black men in uh in Memphis Tennessee gonna cleanse their way? By taking heed according to the word. But you censor the true word of God though. You censor the true word of God and let me show you why. Give me Judah chapter 5 verse 17. You censor the true word of God. Everytime we come out here, they're trying to bring the solution to our people. They're trying to wake our people up. We always being left out of each and every community means that goes on. Why the hell you supposed to be put on a list? And we don't even know who these community leaders is. We don't know who these community leaders is. We the ones who out here on the streets risking our life, going into projects, going in the hood, trying to teach our people how to wake up, trying to teach our people who they are, trying to teach our people to keep God law statutes in command. So we the only true uh community leaders. Even the police said, I know who y'all are. So we know y'all know who we are in there as well. We know y'all know who we are as well. But these y'all sit up there, y'all wanna sit up there and say that we a hate group. Wanna sit up there and say we racist. When we ain't never burnt no crosses, crosses in nobody yard. We ain't never hanged nobody from no trees. We ain't never cut the babies out of your women's stomachs and fed them at Gator, Gator Base. We ain't never put nobody on no slave ship. But you wanna say that we the racist? We ain't no racist. We can't, it's impossible for the black man in America to be a racist. It's impossible. Your whole system is set up among race uh upon races. And then you talking about you having a fake means up in a building talking about community leaders when the community leaders out here. Y'all, you go up in the building and tell them to let the community leaders in. Why so many leaving the real community leaders out? Why come they ask you? Why you, you down there to ask the questions? Cause we can stop the crime in our community. We got the answers. We the ones who in the community bringing the solution to the people. Read what you got.
Judith chapter 5 verse 17. And whilst they sinned not before their God.
See, the problem is our people don't understand that we have sinned before our God. Our God, the God of Israel. The black people in America, all the Israelites. We all God chosen people. God punished us for being disobedient to Him. Read.
They prospered.
God said, when we don't sin before him, when we're not breaking His commandments, we prosper as a nation of people. Is the black man in America prospering? No. If we prosper as a nation of people, no. We are at the bottom of the totem pole. We are not prospering in this nation. Now in fact, the only good people prosper off of us. They use us. We are as merchandise to them. We are as merchandise to them. Guess what? They make crime off of us going to jail. They gotta make money off of us working in their clovers. They make money off of us working in their Walmart. They make money off of us working in their church and chicken. Come out y'all at the Civil Rights Museum. When we out here standing up for black people every day, trying to get our people to wake up and repent. And y'all constantly leave us out of each and every community means that surround here. But don't worry about it. You can leave us out of the mean. You wanna know why? Cause we in the communities. We always in the communities bringing the word out.
Because the God that hated iniquity was with them.
God that hates sin is with us. Our God hates sin, read.
Verse 18. But when they departed from the way which He appointed them.
God said, when everything, when our people are not going in the way which He appointed to us, read.
Verse 18. But when they departed from the way which He appointed them, they were destroyed in many battles.
So everytime we depart from, because that's why our people destroyed right here in the land of captivity. Because we have stood up there, we have departed from the ways that have been appointed to us by the Most High. It's not like you got these two brothers right there at the corner. They sitting up there, they hear the word of God coming down. They don't, we don't support each other. We hate each other. It is what it is. We hate each other. We don't support each other. You hear these brothers, they say, "Hear the word coming down." They say, "Hey, let's listen to these young black men." See, y'all didn't come down here to listen for no solution. Y'all didn't come down here for no solution. Y'all some liars. That's why the Most High said, "Hypocrite with thy mouth destroy the neighbor." That's why our brothers and sisters are destroyed. And it's time for our people to wake up, repent and come back to the law statutes and commandments of the Most High. Give me Judah chapter 28. I'm tired of, I'm tired of. Why won't y'all sit up there and go and see and ask them, why come they always leaving the Israelites out? For real. Cause they know who we are out here. And they know what we come for. They know we come to bring real solutions to our people. They know that we come to wake our people up. They know that we come to get our people to repent. The problem with y'all, y'all still keeping this Martin Luther King dream alive. Ever since, ever since we're segregated, we destroying each other. Uh I mean, you know, integrated, we destroying each other. Integration was the destruction of the black man. It is what it is. Integration was destruction of the black man. That's why y'all down here not still living on Martin Luther King dream. Time for our people to wake up and repent, read.
Do the Rhetory, chapter 28, verse 15. But it shall come to pass, if thou would not hearken unto the voice of the Lord thy God.
The Most High gave Israelites blessings for obedience and He said, "Here were things gonna happen to them for being disobedient." We finna show you why. The black men killing each other, read.
To observe, to do all His commandments and His statutes, which I command thee this day, that all these curses shall come upon thee and overtake thee.
The Most High God said, "We'll keep His commandments. All these curses gonna come upon us and overtake us."
Verse 16. Curse shalt I be in the city?
God told our people, "We don't keep His commandments." He told Israelites, "You don't keep His commandments, curse you gonna be in the city." Segregation was a curse. Integration was a curse. Both were segregation and irrigation must occur. Integration, it's time for our people to wake up. Why is integration a curse? Where are your black owned businesses at? Where are your black owned grocery stores at? Where your black owned fire department at? How come you ain't putting out your own fires? Where, where your black owned construction company is at? Where you building up these houses? That you renovating these old buildings around here? Where your grocery stores you go to to produce your food? Where your farm at? Where your pro? You don't even got your own produce. God said, "Cursed you be in the city. We are divided amongst one another." What divided us in the city? And uh, cause in the sixties, the black man was together. In the sixties, the black man was divided amongst one another, once another. Drugs. Drugs. And who owned the boats to get the drugs over here? Who owned the airplanes to get the drugs uh over here? Who owned the posse deals? Who owned the uh marijuana plantation? The same people that owned the cotton plantation. The same people that owned the corn plantation and the tobacco and the rice. That's who owned that. It's time for our people to wake up and repent and see the truth. Everything is set up against you by design, man. For real though. And that's why they always leaving us out. That's why they always trying to censor us. That's why everytime the news come out, the news record us, but they never put us on the news though. Because they don't want you to hear the truth. It's time for our people to wake up. Read what you got.
Verse 16. Curse shalt I be in the city and curse shalt I be in the field?
God said, "Cursed you be in the field." One nation of people was cursed in the cotton fields. Cursed in our tobacco plantation. Cursed in the rice plantation. Who was cursed in the fields? We was cursed in the field. God said, "This is gonna happen to the Israelites for being disobedient to His commandment." Jump down to Judah chapter 28 verse 68. Now we know y'all listening and y'all keep trying to sit up there and censor us. Keep censoring us. It is what it is. At the end of the day, you gonna know if there's a prophet among you. It's time for our people to wake up, man. For real, we tired of it. We tired of the crime in our communities. We the only ones doing something about it. Y'all just sitting there talking a good game. You're talking a good game, but nothing ain't really changed in Memphis. The life ain't gonna change in Memphis because the Most High brought life to Memphis. It is what it is. The killing ain't gonna stop till it end Memphis because the Most High pulling, putting these uh young uh black men to death. They putting these young black women to death. The Most High God is doing that. Time for y'all to wake up. Read what you got.
The book of Deuteronomy, chapter 28, verse 68. And the Lord shall bring thee into Egypt again.
Why you think they got a big pyramid downtown? And hey, where else is the great in front of us? The Most High said, "I'm gonna bring you into Egypt again. I'm gonna bring you into slavery and to bondage again with what?"
With ships.
Who came? How we came into slavery? Read again, with what?
With ships.
We came into slavery with ships. What we doing? We moving up the Israelites according to the Holy Bible. What we reading? We reading the Holy Bible. All the Israelites, the Bible speaks up. It's time for our people to wake up. The Most High God got His hands on us. Give me Isaiah chapter 9, verse 13. It's time for our people to wake up. Everytime we look up, y'all have these community means and they're trying to do it in secret and leave the Israelites out. I'm telling you, you can't leave them. You can't let them to leave the true community leaders outside your uh, outside of the uh, out of uh these uh means. You can't leave us out because God got us right here, right now. But if you wanna help us on the outside and inside, we out here bringing the word out. I say out now. Your name ain't on the list and you know who we are. Your name ain't, why the hell our name, you know who we are? Our name should be on the list. For real though, somebody need to go in there, write our name on the list right now. I'm pissed, yeah, I'm pissed. Read what you got.
The book of Isaiah, chapter 9, verse 13.
Whoever that is standing at the door, y'all need to go put our name on the list. It is what it is. For real though, talking about you uh black people, you hate black people. Put us on the list, so you can hear the truth come out. So you can hear why we went into slavery. So our people can find out who we are. These black men in America ain't gonna change till they find out who, who they are. They don't even know who they are. They don't know where they going to. Y'all don't understand the black men in these, in the projects. You don't understand how they being bred up. You don't understand what they going through. A lot of you dudes come from the projects. You come from the hood and then you leave your people behind. You don't put no, you don't put none back into the communities. All you do is take out. All you do is take out. Memphis is the third largest city for life. Let me repeat. Memphis is the third largest, the third empty city in Amer- I mean in America. The third empty city in America. That's why you got all these empty abandoned buildings here. Our people don't got no jobs. These young black men don't got no jobs and you wonder why they on the streets uh selling dope. It ain't no damn jobs in Memphis. You wonder why they on the streets selling dope? You wonder why they killing each other? You wonder why they gang? It ain't nothing to do with Memphis. Where your David Busters at? It ain't no David Busters in Memphis. You even took the fire out of Memphis. It ain't no fire in Memphis. It ain't nothing for our people to do in Memphis and you wonder why they killing each other? Time for our people to wake up, talking about y'all some community leaders. You ain't no community leaders. You don't got no solutions. Talking about the boys in the girl's club. The boys in the girl's club ain't doing that. You got pedophiles working up in there. Having sex with the little boy. We see you on the niggas all the time. Time for our people to wake up. Read what you got.
The book of Isaiah, chapter 9, verse 13. For the people turneth not.
God said, "For these people." You so-called Israelites. I mean, you Israelites, you so-called black people. He said, "They what, read?"
For the people turneth not unto him that smites at them.
He said, "You won't turn to the God that smite you." God is the one who smite us down in the streets every day. Give me Judah chapter 28, verse 65. It's time for our people to wake up. God is the one who smite our people in the streets every day. And He said, "You will not turn to him that is smite thee." For real, read what you got.
The book of Deuteronomy, chapter 28, verse 65. And among these nations shalt thou find no ease.
God said, "Among these nations shalt you find no ease." Black man, you have been scattered to the four corners of the earth. You have been scattered to each and every nation to be a servant, to serve your enemies. Why? For being disobedient to the commandments of God. And when we come out here and speak like this, we speaking hate. When we come out here, we speak like this, we speaking late. You leave us out of community, uh out of the community means, cause you wanna say that we speak hate, when we ain't saying nothing hateful out here. All we have said, all we have spoken is truth. All we have spoken is truth since we been out here. But nobody will sit up there and make an outcry for the Israelites. Nobody will point out the work that we doing in the community. Nobody will sit up here and say how we got black men marrying a black woman. How we got black men taking care of their kids? How we getting black men off of drugs? Y'all ain't speaking on that. Cause you don't want the black man to be our drug. You wanna know why? It's called the industrial prison complex. Everytime you catch a black man with a bag of weed, you get to lock him up and make money. The jail make money. The prosecutor make money. The lawyer make money. The DA make money. The bailer make money. The damn uh deputy make money. The police officer that driving around lock him up make money. So that, yeah, yeah, of course. I wouldn't want to hurt y'all. I wouldn't want to, I, I wouldn't want to, I'll keep censoring you too. If I know, if you, if you know we got the solution to get the black man off drugs. Read what you got.
Neither shall the soul of thy foot have rest.
The Most High God said, "As the soul of our foot ain't gonna have rest among these nations." And we don't have rest among these nations. These nations set up here, they have uh, the Most High said, "They have spoiled us." In order to spoil something, that means it ain't no life in it. Our people have no life in them. The life has been sucked out of our people. They have been robbed of everything they got. You have been robbed for your nationality. You have been robbed for your name. You have been robbed for your homeland. Your only temples were sacked. You have been spoiled. Everything has been sucked out of you, read.
But the Lord shall give thee a trembling heart.
The Most High said, "Well, look, in these, among these nations, I'm gonna give you a trembling heart." That's why you killing each other. The black man raised up by his damn mama. Why? Because the father in jail. Because the father in jail. Now he grew up sensitive. Now I'm gonna tell you why these black men killing each other. They killing each other because they raised by their mama. Their mama sensitive. They ain't sensitive. They got the characteristics of their mama. They hate the black man just like their mama hate that man. I'll tell you the truth. I know y'all don't want to hear the truth. We know how to fix your households. We know how to make stronger marriages. We've been doing it for years. We improved it. We can get the black man off drugs, but you don't want our people off drugs. Why? Because you make money off them men on drugs. You don't want our black people to stop killing each other. Why? Because that's a double weapon right there for you. Everytime a black man kill a, one black man, that's one black, that's two black men out of the way. Let me repeat. Everytime a black man kill another black man, that's two black men out of the way. The one who did the murder, he going to jail for life. And the one that's murdered, he dead and in the ground. There's two more black men out the way. And there's two more black kids being raised up without their father in their life. Talking about y'all wants a solution. You don't want no solution. You want our people to stay on drugs and keep, keep, keep killing each other. Read that again, bruh. From the top, read.
Deuteronomy, chapter 28, verse 65. And among these nations thou shalt find no rest.
God said, "Among these nations, you ain't gonna find no rest, read."
Neither shalt thou soul of thy foot have rest. But the Lord shall give thee a trembling heart and failing of eyes and sorrow of mind. In verse 66. And thou, and thy life shall hang in doubt before thee, and thou shalt fear day and night.
That's what's happening in Memphis. The young black man fear day and night. He said, "Our life gonna hang in doubt before thee." This letting you know that the curses of God is upon these chosen people. The curses of God is upon the Israelites. He said, "You gonna, he said, "You gonna fear day and night." The young black man, uh life, he fear day and night. Y'all don't got nothing to worry about in Memphis. Black people ain't killing y'all. Black people killing each other. Black people robbing y'all. Black people robbing each other. Y'all the best people in Memphis. We the ones who ain't safe. But yeah, y'all continue to censor us. Y'all continue to call us a hate group. Y'all continue to call us racist. We ain't burnt no crosses in nobody yard. We ain't hanged nobody from no tree. We ain't spared nobody a gators and use nobody babies for Gator Base. But you continue to call us the racist though. When we the ones who love our people. When we the ones who trying to wake our people up. When we the ones trying to amplify our race. When we the ones trying to show our people who they are according to the Bible. Read what you got.
And shalt have none assurance of thy life. "And shalt have none assurance of thy life."
Our people don't got no assurance in our life in this captivity. We don't got no assurance in our life, by us that we see, we see murder in our streets. We see murder in our streets. Give me Ezekiel twenty two, that's proof.
Bring it out.
Yeah, it's good to see. It ain't nothing new under the sun. We are Israelites, the Bible speaks up. We are God's dogs.
That's right.
And God is on our people. I'ma tell you that. You ain't gonna be able to stop, you can't stop the, uh, crime in the communities without God. Damn wrong with y'all.
Bring it out.
You can't stop the crime in the communities without God. I'm just gonna say, I tell you right now. You ain't stopping nothing without the Israelites in the pictures.
That's right.
Leaving this holy process out the way. Matter of fact, since you wanna, since you wanna keep it, continue to leave God out of everything, you know what? Things gonna get worse.
That's right.
Remember that.
Read it out.
Remember who was out here telling you, things got to get worse.
Bring it out.
Y'all done messed up.
Bring it out, all.
Keep leaving us out of the memes, things gonna get worse. For real.
Bring it out.
Y'all don't wanna call nothing and, and sit up there and repent and be moved with compassion to put us on the list. Things gonna get worse. I'm telling you right now. Read what you got. Verse, start at one. Start at one. I'm gonna show y'all with the Most High call, the lands, what the Israelites, they have it, read.
Bring it out. The book of Ezekiel, chapter twenty two, verse one. "Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, now, thou son of man, wilt thou judge, wilt thou judge the bloody city?"
You hear that God said, we judge this bloody city? That's what the Most High call what Israelites popularly. This is a bloody city.
Bring it out.
Forty-four murders in sixty days, sixty-two, sixty-two, sixty-four. How many days? Hell, sixty-five days. I don't know. Forty-four murders in sixty-five days, uh, uh, over, uh, uh, over a hundred aggravated assaults. Time for our people to wake up. God said, will you judge the bloody city? Read that again.
Bring it out. The book of Ezekiel, chapter twenty two, verse one. "Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, now, thou son of man, wilt thou judge, wilt thou judge the bloody city?"
He said, wilt thou judge the bloody city? That's what we out here to do. We out here to judge this place. We will judge this place, read.
"Yea, thou shalt shoot her all, her abominations." Verse three. "Then saith thou, thus saith the Lord God, the city shed its blood."
Yeah, it's all good. All right, read it, bruh.
Bring it out. Verse three. "Then saith thou, thus saith the Lord God."
Hey, read it from the top again. Read it from the top again.
The book of Ezekiel, chapter twenty two, verse one.
Read.
"Moreover, the word of the Lord came unto me, saying, now, thou son of man, wilt thou judge, wilt thou judge the bloody city?"
That's what we out here to do. We out here to bring judgment to our people. God gonna bring judgment to our people. America is a bloody city. Uh, Memphis is a bloody city. That's why the crime rate so high in this community. Read it.
Bring it out. "Yea, thou shalt shoot her all, her abominations."
The Most High told us to come out here and show our people all their abominations. Y'all want the crime to stop in the community, quit leaving the Israelites out of the community memes.
Bring it out, bro.
Quit leaving us out of community memes. Read on, bruh.
Verse three.
Read.
"Then saith thou, thus saith the Lord God."
Read.
"The city shed its blood."
Hold on, what? The who?
"The city shed its blood."
All Memphis do, all Memphis do is shed blood.
Bring it out.
The Most High said, come out here and show them their abominations. Come out here and show them their sin. Come out here and show them their niggardry. Read on.
"In the midst of it, that her time may come."
You hear that? "In the midst of it, that their time may come." Because if our people don't repent and they don't stop these magic, the Most High gonna judge this place. Read on.
"And maketh idols against herself."
And our people make, our people still in the midst of idolatry. What idol is? This is idolatry right here. Our people still, Memphis is, Memphis is the heart of the Bible, Bill. And they still teaching our people this when Christ looked like this.
That's right.
Look like us. That's them teaching our people that the Israelites don't look like us. Read on.
"That her time may come, and maketh idols against herself, to defile herself."
Read.
Verse four. "Thou art become guilty in the blood, in thy blood, that thou hast shed."
Read.
"And hast defiled thyself in thine idols."
The Most High said, our people have become guilty in the blood they shed and defiled themselves with their idols. Defiled yourself among, in the land of these nations, among the heat of where you were scattered. Read.
"Which thou hast made, and thou hast caused thy days to draw near."
And the Most High said, look, you bring, you caused your days to draw near. That's why our people dropping dead in the streets every day. Y'all gonna keep dropping dead in the streets every day. Why you gonna keep dropping dead in the streets every day? Because you refuse to repent and keep God's command. Why come no other nation of people dropping dead? Why can't enough of young black men and young black women dying every day?
Bring it out.
Why couldn't Washington, uh, uh, full of our people? Cause the Most High said, what? Read that again.
Verse four. "Thou art become guilty in thy blood, that thou hast shed, and hast defiled thyself in thine idols."
God said, you have become guilty with the blood you have shed and defiling yourself with your idols. You defiled yourself with Valentine's Day. You defiled yourself with Christmas. You defiled yourself, hell, Thanksgiving is the most bloodiest day on the planet Earth.
That's right. That's right.
Yourself with Thanksgiving. You defiled Easter coming up. What, what, what does Easter got to do with, uh, uh, what, what does, what does a bunny and a rabbit and an egg got to do with Christ? What does a bunny and an Easter egg got to do with Christ?
Bring it out.
Read on.
"Which thou hast made."
Read.